Safe Thanksgiving, got to eat a lot, so it's good I'll have you here. I'd like to introduce Ed Winters, he's sitting in for Neil tonight, good to have him on board. So if you would, stand with us as Commissioner Smith leads us in invocation and we may stand for pledgely.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the glory and the beauty of this nation. We give thanks for this wonderful system of government that you've established in your writings of the Old Testament. We ask for a blessing upon our leaders in Washington, in Raleigh, at the State House, as well as here in Sanford and in Lee County. We ask for your guiding hand in those deliberations that we must endure, and we ask in the holy name of your Son, Jesus Christ, whose birth we will celebrate in the next few weeks, in most holy and precious name, amen.
Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Krupman, you're in charge.
Yes, sir. A few minutes I am, and appreciate the opportunity. In our number of years, at the first regular meeting in December, the first order of business shall be the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the ensuing year. So in the organization of the Board, the first item is election of the Chair. Now, in years past, we've done it several different ways. We've done it by ballot, we've done it by motion, vote by hand, so it's a pleasure to the Board on what to do for electing the new Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move to elect the Chairman by acclamation, and I nominate the Chairman, Charlie Parks.
We have a motion by acclamation, is there any discussion? Be no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The vote is unanimous. That was easy. Item B is the election of Vice Chairman. Once again, we have ballots ready, or we can just proceed with a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do this by voice vote and avoid the formality of a paper ballot, and I would like to put in the nomination of Mr. Kirk Smith for Vice Chairman.
We have the nomination of Kirk Smith as Vice Chairman. Any other nominations? Need a motion to close the nominations?
I'd close it on the Wednesday name.
All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So all in favor of Kirk Smith being Vice Chairman of the Board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. All right, item C is the resolution fixing the time, date, and place for regular meetings. It's on page four and five of your agenda. The resolution that was presented shows the current meeting schedule of the first and third Monday of each month, with meetings starting at 6:00 PM, and with the planning Board being part of the third Monday meeting. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
I'm not sure if I am in order, but I would, I have some conversation about the time. And because of the time of our meetings and the time that we get out of our meetings is, is getting to be a challenge. The meeting times, most of the time we are out at nine o'clock or after 9:30, and it's getting to be a habit of ours. And because of that, I would suggest or ask for action or motion for us to change the time to maybe three o'clock, and because of Commissioner Connect and Smith, I would consider four o'clock. But I think that because of the time that we leave this building, it's just a problem. And not only that, but I've gotten a lot of flack or concerns from some of our constituents that comes to the meeting, and so we probably need to change it in consideration of our citizens.
Mr. Chair, in response to that, you know, I acknowledge that Commissioner Frazier's got a good point about the lateness, especially during the winter period where it gets dark. But I remember two years ago, three years ago, when the same topic had come up and it was hotly contested, and the issue was that there were businessmen like Commissioner Connect who have a full-time job, they carry them at least till 5:00 or 5:30 every day. And in order to accommodate all seven of the Commissioners and being able to make sure that they can all be here, we can't ask him to forego his regular full-time job when we have the discretion to start the time differently. Plus, we have a lot of other businessmen and women who occasionally do attend this meeting, especially when there are issues of importance on the agenda, and when we have those, they can't get away at three or four o'clock in the afternoon, they have to wait till 4:30 or 5:00 at the earliest. But I, but I think on this point, what we should do is remain flexible, and I think we have in the past, that on any particular date, if we anticipate a really long agenda or whatever, and we can anticipate it at the meeting before, and we can publicly notice it, that we ought to move to, move up the start time of the next subsequent meeting, so that we can get plenty of notice every one, and start it maybe a little earlier so we can get a long agenda done. Or if we know we're going to have a long public hearing that night, we can adjust ahead a little.
I respect that, however, I realize that Commissioner Connect and Smith has employment. However, when I ran for office, I knew that these kind of things was going to be, and so, I mean, I'm not saying that they give up their job for position, but county position, but I think that we ought to be considerate of that. However, I think that we need to move in the direction of trying to get out on a timely manner during our meeting times. If there are public things that we need to consider at any other time, then we can consider to go to six o'clock probably, but I think that we ought to try to move our time schedule back up.
You know, that was our main thing, was keeping our time so regular citizens have the opportunity to attend. I know everybody likes me as I encourage because we do have hours that make things difficult. But our main objective was, and our main, I think our main reason was, that regular citizens have the opportunity to come, and they can come do public comments, because it is mainly after work, and would make it more accessible to the general public. And I think that's my main reason why, I like the time the way it is. I mean, we're flexible here today. You know, we're here at three so we can go and join the Sanford Christmas parade. So I mean, there's flexibility, time's what it needs to be. I think I like the way it is, the main thing because of the fact that people in the community can't attend, which they couldn't before, and I, you know, you may have heard people talk to you, but I have other people saying they like it a lot better, they can even watch it too, when they get home from work.
All right, I just need a motion.
I put the motion on the floor.
To move to four?
Four o'clock, four o'clock.
All right, there's a motion to move the meetings to four o'clock, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Frazier works for the most important employer who has the power to terminate permanently. So I certainly want to respect his request, but do on a more serious note, or just as serious. Let me say, the last meeting was out of whack. You don't have youngsters coming to our meetings and getting to the podium at nine o'clock on school nights. You're not going to do that, folks. You take care of your business on the front end, and anytime you have these presentations that may not involve that child or an individual sitting in the audience, let's put those that tail in, and then if a person chooses to leave before the presentations are over, to include our staff, let them go.
That was my, that was my fault. Yeah, it was. No, well, I admit that I jumped ahead because I didn't realize that I was out, I was off the agenda when I stood up to do the presentation. I was going in the order that was published, and I forgot that we switched that. But if I hadn't done that, then the children would have been out here earlier, and so that's my mistake, and I apologize for that.
I can't even catch you when you're wrong and you not want to take credit.
Part of it was my fault, because I could have stopped it, it was already going, so I didn't.
But now, seriously, and I appreciate hearing your comments, but I'm just saying, let's all bear that in mind in the future. Let's get our staff and the public out of here, and if we want to hear these midnight presentations, y'all have at it, I'm going to watch football. Call the question.
Aye. Any more discussion? All right, the motion is to move the meetings to four o'clock on the first and third Mondays. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I love four o'clock.
Yes, I did say, I said.
I didn't hear the four o'clock, I said move it on Thursday, so.
Did I say Thursday?
I missed the one.
Happy Thanksgiving.
The motion was the first and third Mondays at four o'clock, all in favor, to move to four o'clock on the first and third Monday, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion's defeated, four to.
I agree.
Need a motion to approve the resolution that was presented?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think all said aye, so here's a six, six oh. All right, the item D, the annual examination of official bonds, the bond, item starts on page six, it's 25,000 for the share, 50,000 for the registered deeds, 100,000 for the tax administrator, 100,000 for the finance officer, and any employee who handles 100 or more at any one time is 100 as well. So we pretty much have kept the bonds at this limit since I've been here, it's adequate under statute, so we're recommending approval of the bonds as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. These levels, are these considered adequate levels, or do we get recommendations from either the NCACC or others about what they should be?
We get, we have some discussion with Marsh, our insurance company out of Charlotte, but they exceed the minimum levels, and I think, you know, we're in agreement that they're just at the adequate levels, or the kind of cash that we handle.
I noticed on page eight of this, this handout, our agenda package today, we also talked about the liability contract declarations that we have for public officials' liability?
Yes, sir.
And I must have missed that in the past, I was just, I was curious about that. Is this the liability insurance we have for our public officials, for errors and omissions, that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
And has it been this level all along?
Actually, when I got here, I think that was a little bit lower, and we raised it.
And?
That was based on my experience at the association, what most governments were leaning towards and taking, and also with some of the court cases that we had seen, and what kind of payouts there were, and we raised that level.
Okay, and have, does this all come as part of a package with the bonding, or is this a separate insurance?
This is actually part of our general liability package with the association.
So this is just in here for information only?
It comes as part of that, so you'll see it.
All right.
I move to approve.
I think Mr. Parks said already to approve.
I'm sorry.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Okay, additional items, agenda items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one item. We want to, would like to bring back up the application for lottery funds that the Board of Education presented at our first meeting in November.
Okay, so we'll make item E under due diligence.
John, does Senator hand out on that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead and hand it out.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, approval of consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
All in favor?
Hold on a second, before you, I did have one question, I'm actually just looking at, if replacing environmental board, which would move Mr. Garrett, oh, this is fine, I support that, I was going to appoint another.
I believe we have to get, solicit some people to replace Mr. Garrett.
He's an alternate right now, we would have an open alternate.
We'll have to advertise it to Mr. Reeves.
He'll be one of several alternate positions open on boards and commissions.
All right. How was it, thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the, we have a motion for consent?
Yeah, I move to approve it.
All those approve or consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We had no bonds signed up for public comments and old business, consider resolution guidelines for late taxing, tax, say. Late tax, listing penalty, Mr. Frazier.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we discussed this resolution and the issues around this at length at the last meeting, and the motion was made at the last meeting to defer this item to today. So it's back on the agenda, and it's back presented as was presented at the last meeting since the Board did not authorize any changes at the last meeting. There were a lot of proposed changes discussed, but no changes were actually voted on. Probably should clarify.
We spun our wheels a bunch, didn't we?
We had asked the council to, to work on the language, and Attorney Yarber is not here, and I would suggest or make a motion that we table it till next meeting.
I think after speaking with Neil, without, you know, some further guidelines on what you all would like to see changed, I think it's going to be difficult for him to make So I mean, you know, because really, in the end, the statute, it always comes back to the Board anyway. You know, even with the guidelines, the appeals will come to the Board unless the Board gives the authority to the Board of Legalization and Review, which was, once again, something that was discussed, but it was never actually voted.
I think Commissioner Del Rumpel was, Del Rumpel was concerned about the maybe, and then we talked about the shell, and she wanted shell, and I think in the resolution it was maybe, so I'm not sure.
I think that was resolved. I just take, because these are guidelines, so since they're up to us to decide in the end, may was used, because it's under our discretion. That's the reason why the words may were there, not shell. I think we resolved that point.
Yeah, I think that's what Neil, as in the last discussion.
Mrs. Yarber?
What are your opinions on the resolution that we're proposing?
It's for discretion. I had to charge the penalty, you know, to be fair and equitable to everyone. That's what the law says I'm to do, and that's what I will do, and.
She didn't get a cut.
Very wise response. Put it back on the table, wherever you want.
You know, she is, the statute is clear with her authority. You know, she cannot waive the penalty, only the Board, or unless you designate it to the Board of Legalization and Review can, you know, can waive the penalty or alter the penalty in any way. So she, she's going to do that.
And I think.
And the guidelines would be just that, would be guidelines. It always comes back to the Board.
You have a discretion to do what you want with it on any given case, anyway, so, you know, if you don't, if you're not comfortable with a guideline, then, you know, you can certainly deal with it case by case, which they have to come before you, and look at each situation, each, you know, situation on its own merit.
Well, that's what the guidelines simply say, at the end of the day, it's up to the Board.
You're still going to bring all appeals before us anyways, regardless, right?
Yes, sir, I have to.
So that's, yeah.
This is really more for us to have kind of a consensus of policy or set of guidelines, so we know what our center of gravity is when we want to bring these cases up. Otherwise, it's, we're dealing with each case uniquely every time without any, without any baseline policy in place. So I think it's good to have the, have the guidelines like that.
Well, I certainly like the idea of knowing whether a person's five days or 30 days, or this is their third, fourth, or fifth time. When you present it to me, I like it that way, because I can look quickly and say, oh, you are three or four or five, you out, period. Because it shows to me you're negligent, or you had no intent to list anyway, so the other two, you have some.
Or you hire a certified public accountant out of Chicago. Your guidelines from the state, is that correct?
The statute.
The statute.
These guidelines?
The statute.
These guidelines in the resolution are not from the statute.
No, no, your guidelines that you assess.
Yes, sir, what I do. It says if it's late, there's a penalty, and charge it.
That's the law.
Yes, sir.
So where are we, a motion on the floor?
We have a motion table?
Yes.
Call the question.
Is there any further discussion?
I think we should act upon it.
Okay. That sounds like a no.
All those in favor of table, it's aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed?
No.
Okay, we got four to. Okay, so it's defeated, it's for us table.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the guidelines as written.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor, is any discussion?
I just, for Commissioner Frazier's benefit, you know, these are guidelines, we can change them at any meeting, if we, if we want to bring it back up or whatever, so.
I don't have a problem with, with the guidelines, it's just that I know that there was language that needed to be done, and so I was hoping that we could get that done prior to working with what we have in front of us. Even our council actually mentioned that, so I just would hope that we would not approve something that's going to have to be worked on after we approve.
Okay, Commissioner Connect, sorry to interrupt. Any other discussion?
I look at the bright side, the Board still maintains the control. If along the way, we find other things that we tighten up, or make it better, we can certainly revisit the idea.
Okay, no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approve the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, and follow-up to this, and let me just get a clarification from Mary before she sits down, the penalty that we assessed for Magnetti on the last meeting, right after we tabled the guidelines, which would, which if we had put it in place, would have, would have capped the penalty on Magnetti at $5,000. Now we've put the policy in place, and yet last time, we voted a $25,000 penalty on Magnetti Morelli. And I'm suggesting, I would suggest to y'all that, that had I been more astute last meeting when Commissioner Reeves was encouraging me to vote for a $5,000 penalty, and I had swung my vote that way, then they would have been capped at the last meeting at 5,000. I'd like, since I voted against it, I'd like to revisit, to re-raise this issue, this motion, to, instead of hitting them with the full $25,000 penalty, regress back to the $5,000 cap, which is now our policy, so they don't get caught in the twilight zone between meetings. I think that's only fair since that's what we say is our guidelines for all companies. I think that a $5,000 penalty for any business is a substantial amount of money, I don't care how big they are, and that I think that it's appropriate that we show a little bit of grace during this time of the year, and that we, that we, now that we have a set of guidelines, that we have uniformity in how we assess penalties, that we apply that retroactively to Magnetti. And that's my motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, hate to disagree with you, but there is an aspect of the EDC grant that they have received from the taxpayers, and again, I said it before, and it's, it's an insult to the taxpayers that they didn't have the decency to file a timely matter. And on top of that, they received over $40,000 of taxpayer money, so in essence, probably that grant's coming back to us.
I mean, that's something a previous Board enacted, just because I think, just because they're taking economic incentives, I don't think you should treat them like lepers. I mean, they still paid their taxes. This is just a, a late filing on a listing penalty, they still paid their full amount, and they didn't pay less of their taxes, correct?
Well, they probably haven't paid it yet, because it's not time.
I mean, that's not the issue, that they're getting away with paying less.
No, it's not about payment.
Exactly. It's all about payment, so.
But it is, it is a levy on their tax bill, so the $25,000 is on our books.
Right, correct. So they're still paying their, well, they haven't, but assuming they go recent, but that's a whole different discussion if they don't pay their taxes.
Right, that's an interest issue.
That's a different issue. So as we know so far, they have always paid their taxes, regular taxes, yeah.
As far as I know.
Yeah, so I still think it's a high levy, $25,000, regardless if they received economic development, that's something, that's a whole different discussion.
This isn't, this isn't an opinion necessarily, it's just a statement of fact. The statute may not seem fair, but it is equitable because it's based on a percentage. So if I have $10,000 worth of property, and I pay a weightless penalty on 10%, of what I own, and I have a million dollars, and I pay 10%, it's equitable in that regard. So the statute is equitable.
Yeah, the point I would make though, is that, is that when you're talking about companies that employ hundreds of people, and you hit them with substantial fines like this, what they do, they either take it out of shareholders' pockets, or they fire people, or they trim their staff, because, because when you hit people for tens of thousands of dollars, that money comes from somewhere. And so when you, when you go, when you do that, when you hit somebody with a penalty, and there wasn't any actual damage done, what you've done is you basically said, you know, we don't care if you lay somebody off. That's the message you send. You know, we talk about economic incentives and how important people think they are, and I would tell you that if we're a pro-business environment, we'll slap somebody on the wrist for being late, but we don't hammer somebody unnecessarily with a $25,000 fine, because, because frankly, all that does is that's going to translate into somebody getting laid off, or somebody getting fined.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
You think they got that $25,000 just sitting around in the front office, ready to give away?
My concern here is, is we are making a difference between a person with 25 and a person with 82. It's pretty much what we're doing. And we, we had considered that at the last meeting, that this is what we would do, and now we want to come back and change it, because we just changed, amended the law today, or amended the guidelines today. I think that what we should do is, is carry on from where we, with the action that was taken at the last meeting, and we move on forward with what we have now. I think if we keep backing up, then we will find ourselves playing games. I think if we keep backing up, then we will find ourselves playing games with, with people, and we're making it personal. And I don't want this board to make actions personal, and that's what it seems to me, and I'm just saying, to me.
Well, to me, it seems like when you take $25,000 out of my pocket, that's very personal.
Well, the thing of it is, is that the other, other issue with that is, if, if Nettie Morelli had filed, then this penalty wouldn't be set before them, however, the other people had the same issue as well. So just because of that, it doesn't make it right for them not to have to pay the penalty if they, if they made issue. I mean, the listing is one of the issues.
Well, the same thing goes with a lot of incentives, just because I have 10 employees, and somebody has 100 employees, I don't get an economic incentive in a 100 employee business does, just remember that when we talk about incentives, fair and equitable.
What we'll find, what we'll, what we'll find ourselves doing is, we'll start just juggling things around as we think it's okay, instead of looking at the guidelines, and I don't...
This is, this is their first late filing in five years, it's something like they do this to try and get around paying taxes. I could see they, they do this on a yearly basis, where they've been caught in the last two, three years constantly trying to get around paying those taxes on property.
Certainly, it's not because of, of this company, it's with anyone who would violate or who lists their taxes late. I mean, it's not just this particular company, it's just anyone. I think that they're gonna start making plans on that.
Mr. Reeves, did you have something?
Yes. Back when I was a teenager, I was working in a very dusty environment, and I said, my cousin had us a couple of cokes. He came back with one coke, and I said, well, whose coke? He said, this is my coke, the machine took your money. I learned a very valuable lesson that day. The, the point being, let's be sensible, they're not trying to rob us of the late listing. We, we don't have to be unmerciful to everybody that come forward with, with that late listing, unless, of course, they've exceeded the number. I think there's a reasonable number of times that you can have a late listing, and after that, it becomes, in my opinion, a habit of yours, and in that case, you ought to pay for your habits. So I said all that to say, as I did it last maybe, 5,000 is reasonable in this regard, and I submit to that. Right?
Any more? Okay. I, I, I think one of the things I, I wasn't quite sure I understood what we were doing last time, so I went out and asked some questions, and rather than, you know, I was translating it into we were missing taxes, and they were delaying, and so we wouldn't pay the taxes. I found that that was incorrect. We, we weren't missing any taxes, it was a penalty for filing late. And so, what you wanna do, to my way of thinking, is a reasonable assessment to keep people on track and on top. And I think, you know, sometimes tip-offs may be way, way too high, especially if they haven't done anything. I think this resolution allows us enough room, that we can look at it, at individual, what they've been doing, what they've done, and what they've done this time. I think it is our responsibility as the board to do that, rather than pass that responsibility off. So given that, we have a motion to, a motion for it approved.
This, this motion is to reduce the penalty to Magnetti Morelli retroactively to 5,000, which would be consistent with the new guidelines.
Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we need to raise a hand, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, all opposed? Two, four.
Now, let me...
I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just gonna say, let's make it clear that this applies only to the folks who appeal. I don't want some guys in the home saying, I need to go get my money.
If I was sitting at home, I would do that.
Well, I think the appeal file date is passed anyways, correct?
Well, you, they can appeal penalty. That's not, that's not an evaluation appeal, so they can...
There's no timeline.
There's no timeline on, on penalty.
But it's not the same as what we're dealing with here today, they didn't appeal it, right?
Right, I mean, most people will pay their penalty.
I, I agree, that's all I'm saying.
Unless they, they file a written appeal, I don't bring it before you.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mary.
If I had, if I had a listing that, that was, I would certainly send in an appeal now, if I could get it through.
Well, fortunately, there's not really that many that are above that $5,000, so that's good. We try hard to work with our taxpayers, and overall, good job.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John. New business, considered grant application for the year 2014 Senior Health Insurance Information Program. Penalty?
Good afternoon, Mr. Parks and Board, I have two items for you, and the first one is to approve the fiscal year 2014 Seniors Health Insurance Information Program Outreach Grant, which is under the Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act, the acronym MIPA. The dollars are $1,739, and there's no match required on that. And this is to promote what we call the Extra Help Option in the Medicare, and to help older adults understand the Medicare benefits further. It's an outreach, meaning that we need to advertise the program that's available to them at the enrichment center, and we will advertise on the Colts Van to ads, and that will return some revenue into the Colts system, and advertising with local newspaper and radio, and our, our center post newsletter that goes out, 1,000 copies a month.
Okay, any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion's approved. How, how many do you not reach, just with them coming down there?
The Extra Help is a unique batch of folks, there are folks out there who are dual-eligible under Medicare and Medicaid, and we have to seek them out ourselves, it's not reported to us to go out and find them. So we have these clinics, these open-door clinics, we'll go, Janice will be going to pharmacies, that's something we haven't done. So we, the number goes up each year of the folks that we see, and she, she sees people even after the December 7th deadline.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Brew, any other question?
Okay, the next one is the Evidence-Based Health Promotion and Disease Prevention Grant for fiscal year 2014, and it's to promote disease prevent, it's disease prevention in its, what we call CAN, evidence-based healthcare programs such as Tai Chi and diabetes, self-management, and living healthy with diabetes. And we will offer Tai Chi classes to our Diners Club participants at no cost, and that's some, some folks who could really use that alternative form of, of exercise. The amount is $2,814, and does require a local match of 313. Any questions on that?
I don't, I don't really have a question about the grant itself, or the approval of the grant, but I would ask your cooperation with one thing. And, and it might be appropriate for you and the health department rep, whoever that person is, to do this. I'm, I'm interested in seeing us on the subject of health promotion of people with diabetes. The, the food banks here in, in the county are distributing food, and it's, it's a wonderful thing, particularly this time of year, it's an important thing, but a lot of the food that we're distributing are being distributed to people with type 2 diabetes, and they aren't getting appropriate medical care at these food banks, or, or medical advice, and they're consuming things or being distributed things which really aren't very healthy. And, and as, as desirable as this to have things to put in your stomach this time of year, I think we ought not be promoting, you know, things that are gonna cause their diabetes to be out of control. And I, I would ask that, that, at least on the senior front, that you guys would, would see about reaching out to the Bread of Life Ministries, to CUOC, and to any other food banks that are doing food distributions, to see if they're, if they would like someone to review what they're doing, and, and maybe this is more appropriate for your health department, but I was thinking seniors in your case, because there are a lot of seniors that go to these food banks, to, to, to help them at least screen the stuff they're distributing to make sure that we're getting healthy food to them. I apologize for it being off, off the subject, but it's something that's troubled me for a while.
I was going, why don't they do the same screening with ethnicity?
Yeah.
So, you know, why can't they do it for diabetes?
Yeah, I really, 'cause it, 'cause I, I used to be really disturbed with the stuff, we were giving cakes and, 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 you know, gluten-laden foods all the time at Bread of Life, and it just really troubled me that we're giving to people with diabetes.
Well, I, I, two problems, like, they just went through this. One problem is, is they distribute what they have to distribute, and so wherever they get their foods from, that's what they have to give out.
I just wouldn't want to put a bullet in the gun to shoot them with, you know?
Well, it's, it's, hey, that's, that's an option that you have, a lot of folks don't have that option, and that's what we're dealing with. And this is another area where I think government might be going too far. You know, some of these handouts are necessary, not just for the recipient, but for the family, who are not necessarily the same condition. So there are lots of things that, that we need to be very, very careful and concerned about. I don't know, and that puts too much of a burden on the program. Yeah, I think the education part is, is a good part, but...
And by the way, what, I wasn't asking for someone to go down there and, and, and filter what they're handing out, I was just saying, reach out to the two agencies that are giving, you know, food to thousands of people, and say, would, do you need any assistance in reviewing your dietary menu? Because I know CUOC has a dietary menu, but I'm not sure that they have, you know, physicians or, or dieticians that are looking at what they're, what they're distributing.
I don't want them saying, both commissioners tell us not to give...
No, I wasn't saying that at all.
Let me ask you, what is Tai Chi?
Tai Chi is a form, Peggy, who's our facilitator, she actually took a class, and it's a lot like a yoga-type class, a lot of flowing movement and balancing, and it helps with the arthritis.
I thought that came from hunger.
Tai Chi?
Yeah, all the floating, that means hunger.
Keep in shape, sir.
No, very good, you can get that food.
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, a motion's approved, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Acceptance of Homeland Security Program, memorandum of understanding.
Good afternoon, Chairman Parks and Board, what you have for you is a memorandum of understanding between Lee County, the State of North Carolina, for Homeland Security exercise that we're gonna carry out in early summer of 2014. The exercise is gonna focus on something that no one's done before, we're gonna work on the recovery aspect of it, so instead of being reacting, reacting to an incident, we're gonna worry, worry about the recovery part, which we saw was a big deal during the tornado, as far as being able to get your funds back, and how you move people around. And without giving you any more information on exactly what we're gonna do, because that would kinda defeat the purpose, basically, we'll put exercise together by May 1st of next year, and this event will take place between August 1st and September the 15th.
Okay, any questions for Shane?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what exactly we, we're getting here?
It's a, we're gonna do a Homeland Security exercise and event planning exercise. We're getting 11, not to exceed $11,111 on 11 cents in reimbursement from the State of North Carolina, I don't know how they come up with that number. I requested 12,000 through our domestic preparedness region, but that's the number they gave us. 11, 11, 11. And then basically, we'll pay for the contractor, supplies, foods, refreshments for the exercise. It'll take place in our EOC, it'll be a three-day event, we'll work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and we'll simulate a real-world event here in our county, and we'll focus on the recovery aspect of it.
What other agency will be involved, or is this yours?
It'll be Lee County will host it, and then it'll be the State of North Carolina, and the incident management teams that are made up of people from all across the state.
What about locally?
Yeah, locally?
Locally, I guess, it'll be our EOC staff, and then we'll pull in the incident management team personnel to supplement and support those people.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at, anybody from the city and the borough, town, borough?
Everyone that's in our EOC will be invited to this event, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one, it's, it's a sidebar, it's not homeland, but it, it does deal with disasters. Do you have any one of your staff that monitors the FEMA programs during the course of the year, during hurricane periods? Sometimes FEMA has money for properties that have been damaged long after storms.
Yeah, that, it usually falls back in, like, when you have a flooding event, you'll have money come available through the mitigation funds to go in and buy out these properties that have flooded repeatedly.
Right.
There's been some money out there after the tornado, the tornado shelters, but it was very hard to get in our area because we're predominantly not a tornadic state, which we proved them wrong on that, but, but yes, we do keep an eye on that, and those, we have planners to the state that push that information down when funds come available.
That would be something I think could be very, very beneficial. I still maintain and have great concern about the San Lee area.
Yes.
Near our apartment, the folks down below.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, considered closing portion of Bruce Floggin's Road, Mr. Crowe, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we received this request from Martin Marietta Materials. I'm gonna hand out a memorandum that I asked for, it's actually dated 26th of December, it's supposed to be dated 26th of November from our planning staff, and I wanted to get their opinion on the record that they were okay with the closure of this road, even though it's a dead-end road right there at Martin, Martin Marietta. Just wanted to make sure that they had reviewed it, and make sure there was no potential public use for, for the road in any way, shape, or form, and they've agreed, and they've agreed with the request to grant Martin Marietta this, this closure of this road, so...
What this effect, in effect, does, correct me if I'm wrong, because it doesn't say it explicitly in the, in the packet, other than the fact that they've had trash accumulating out the end of that road, people drive down there and use it as a dump, and that, and so therefore, if they close the road, since they own both sides, the property on both sides of the road, then they can effectively shut down that road and, and prevent people from coming back there to drop trash. Is that, is that what we're trying to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And the resolution's on page 58, that needs to be considered by the...
Do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve, any further discussion?
I'm wondering how far back from the intersection, the other block is the area that's up and around.
Yes, sir.
You happen to know what that distance is from the intersection. You know, sometime when you cut off a dump, you only move it up.
Close Hickory House Road there? I was gonna say, the distance, the distance there is probably about 100. I would say, based on the lot, that's, you know, number, lot number one there, that's probably about 150 feet.
Okay. Put a couple deer cameras out there, you'll catch him.
I guess them already did, doesn't matter, catch them.
Okay, any further discussion? Do we have a motion on the floor to approve? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Application of lottery funds.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I actually wrote the wrong date on this agenda abstract. The board met and discussed this, I believe it was back October 1st, so not November 4th, but anyway, we did discuss it, and I was directed to meet with the superintendent and discuss using performance contracting instead of using lottery proceeds to replace air handler... using lottery proceeds to replace air handlers and electronic, electric heat at East Lee Middle School. Um, I did meet with, uh, the superintendent. He invited me to the Facilities and, and Technology Committee meeting, which I did go to. Um, I did plagiarize the notes that, uh, Commissioner Smith took at the meeting, which is at the back of all this information I gave you. Uh, we met with them on November twenty-first, two thousand thirteen at five o'clock and, um, discussed it. They did, uh, the committee did give a, um, recommendation to approve the analysis, uh, to be done, to see if this is a feasible project. The only, you know, it still has to go to their board and they don't meet until next, uh, next Monday, I believe. Um, Board of Education meets on the tenth, I guess that's next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. And, uh, so they still have to approve going forward to that. What the staff did ask, um, they want to make sure that they are in a position, no matter if we're in control of, of this project, you know, through the performance contracting or if they're in control of the project, they want to make sure it gets done this coming summer. So they asked that we go ahead and approve their application, um, to be sent to the state and we just won't draw down the funds until the analysis is done and both parties agree whether to go forward or not with the performance contracting.
This is an interim approval of the use of the lottery funds for that purpose.
That's correct. The, the request can be withdrawn, um, if we go forward with the performance contracting.
So, so we, we'll hit another decision point sometime between now and summer when they want to execute the money and, and you'll come back and give us a recommendation again.
Actually, I believe if I'm not mistaken, they said something about March they need to, need to have finalized.
We, we would try to have, um, the folks that do these analysis can do these in about thirty days, once we decide who we want to do the analysis. There, there's no money outlay for the county. Um, the company that comes in and does the analysis is really taking the risk that, you know, they're gonna gain some knowledge on, um, on their competitors about, you know, the project and when it comes time to bid the project, they can come in with a better bid, but, um, we've used one company in the past, um, to analyze our buildings. They're willing to come back and do it again, even though they, we didn't even, you know, put our buildings out to bid because they, you know, the project wasn't feasible.
Does this have any direct impact on our capital, um, improvement program for next year?
Yes, sir, it would. This would take two projects off the board that they have had in their CIP for five or six years. I think it's been in there every year since I've been here.
Since I've, I've been.
Well, it would probably take one of ours off, wouldn't it?
It would take the, some of the library renovations off of our, we're gonna try to, to group the library into these two buildings and the analysis, um, which is our most inefficient building.
As, as long as it doesn't obligate us, you know, and action today doesn't obligate us in our CIP in any way, shape or form, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just, I just don't want to do anything that we would come back and retroactively say, well, you know, we already made that decision for our CIP without taking everything else.
What, what they have decided is they're gonna move forward with the project by using the lottery proceeds and based on what they can draw down, um, if they do both the east and west middle schools, it will tie up the lottery for three to four years. And they won't be doing any other projects, so that list of all that, uh, wouldn't call little projects, but the other projects like the paving projects and, and the drainage projects and the roofing projects and the major painting or renovations or whatever that they've been using the lottery funds for, they're now tying those funds up for four years. And so what, what eventually will happen is they'll start coming back to us and start trying to creep up that, the, uh, the current capital, I call it, um, the capital expense that we give to them annually. They'll, they'll want more there. So my objective here was to try to free up, kid, you know, not tie the lottery proceeds up for a long period of time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with you on that.
That, that if we can, we can figure out a way to do a performance, uh, contracting on this and use the energy savings, um, this is what we should try to do.
Are they in agreement with using the energy savings?
Well, kinda, sorta. It all comes down to, you know, part of our annual dance with them on current expense because you remember that we give them the utility money to pay their utilities in current expense and, you know, say, okay, we're gonna give you the current expense, we expect to check back, you know, we're just exchanging money with ourselves there.
Yeah.
So what we agreed to is that when we get down to the discussion of current expense with them, that is gonna be part of the consideration and I'm sure there are some folks that want to talk about SRO funding as well as part of the consideration.
The thing on energy funding that I like about these, these types of deals is that it incentivizes the, the, the public schools to be careful with their energy consumption.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, you, you want them to be careful.
Yeah, but, but I also want both boards to be in agreement that this is what we're gonna do with the savings and not get down to the budget time and have you war.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it clear up front. Let me ask you the other, this is a question I wanted to add. It appears we're only doing East Lee at this time.
That's correct.
And how far out do they anticipate West?
Two years.
And they're certain, and I know this has been on the radar screen for quite a while, they're certain that they can wait that long for West? I, I don't have a monetary solution that they want to deal with this thing down, so let's get that out of the way.
I think they're resigned to the fact that, you know, they're, they're, they took a look at both units and decided east needed to be fixed before west.
I'm sure.
Whether west can make it, you know, for the two years or not, I'm sure they're doing their best to make sure that it's gonna...
I agree, but it's still a call back on us. That's why I want the board to be aware that this is a possibility we may wake up and find this west on the table.
Yeah, I think this, yes, sir. I think this adds to a long, you know, list of discussion with the Board of Education. We have a lot of issues with them and, um, I see a lot of discussion in the future.
I got one other quick, just a technical question here. It says the HVA system in place is thirty-five plus years old. And I'm saying to myself, when was East Lee built? Did we put a used system in there? Is that what we did?
That would be seventy-eight.
I'm not sure.
That's probably about right?
It was before my time.
East Lee was built in seventy-five or seventy-eight?
Both, both East and West were built some ten years ago.
Was it that?
That's about right, 'cause I went to school there the first year it was built. I'm aging myself now, but...
So you're thirty-five?
Well, you stay within the thirty-nines.
It's hard to believe the two schools are that old.
Okay. Any further discussion, question?
Just, just to add is we're, we're giving permission for the Board of Education to apply for the lottery funding.
Actually, it comes through us, yes, sir.
Contingent upon the performance contracting assessment simultaneously going.
Yes, sir.
Do you need permission to make arrangements with the financing aspect or the, the assessment aspect?
Not yet. I'm talking with a company and we'd probably have that to be on the sixteen to discuss.
And the assessment doesn't cost us anything, is what I understand. They do that for free based on the possibility of savings.
And, you know, not really, don't really want to come to, to the board and, and ask for approval until the Board of Education as a whole gets their approval to, to pursue it. So they meet on the tenth, we meet on the sixteen and I just kind of thought that was an act of aggression.
Absolutely.
I didn't want to get out ahead of them.
Okay. No further discussion, no, I have a motion. Motion's approved. Okay. Motion's approved and further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah. Mr. Crowe, the manager's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a managerial report tonight.
Okay.
Well, you have a good holiday, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks. You're well.
Stay because you're late.
Thanks. You know, Ad, I'm coming tonight to, to fill in for Neil while Neil is, uh, in Rowan County chasing something down over there, so...
Okay.
I think Ad would rather, I think Ad would rather be here than where, where Neil is tonight.
That's right. That's going there. Okay. Commissioner Bray.
Uh, just trust that everybody continue a safe and, uh, wonderful holiday. I think that everybody's probably still on, uh, uh, holiday, uh, uh, system probably and, uh, so we just, uh, hope that they continue it and be safe and have a good time at the parade tonight. I think Jim has got his full will and, uh, he's gonna get out there tonight.
My wife's old truck. If it, if it, if it makes it to the end of the parade.
So we ask that you all stay warm, drink, uh, a lot of hot chocolate and coffee and, uh, and be safe.
So that's why you want me around there.
Thanksgiving and that fun.
I had a wild weekend out in the mountains. Had a wild, wild Christmas trip.
Yes, sir. I'm hopeful that, uh, twenty-fourteen, that we'll have a fantastic Lee County, which includes Sampson and Broadway, agenda. Not a, not a Republican agenda, not a Democratic agenda, but a Lee County agenda to get us back in step with our needs, employment.
I think we have a lot of people working hard toward that end.
I agree.
And, uh, so I, I'm agreeing, agreeing with you. I'd like to see us go forward and do great things for the government.
Well, um...
I don't have anything other, so...
I just want to say congratulations to Chairman Vice Chair.
Okay. So, uh...
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you at the parade.
Sorry.